Through the heart of the valley, we rise so bright. Where the news flows freely in the morning light. Yuba Sutter dot live where truth comes alive. Every Tuesday's a journey, it's where we thrive. Watch it unfold. Yuba Sutter dot live in the heart of our home, be informed, be wise. Yuba Sutter dot lives. We capture it all. Policy debates hear the people's call with Yuba Sutter dot live. You'll never miss a beat. Special reports hit hard, shining a spotlight. Yuba Sutter dot live. Yuba Sutter dot live. Through the heart of the valley, we rise so bright. Where the news flows freely in the morning light. Yuba Sutter dot live where truth comes alive. Every Tuesday's a journey, it's where we thrive. Watch it unfold. Yuba Sutter dot live in the heart of our home, be informed, be wise. Yuba Sutter dot lives. We capture it all. Policy debates hear the people's call with Yuba Sutter dot live. You'll never miss a beat. Special reports hit hard, shining a spotlight. Yuba Sutter dot live. Yuba Sutter dot live.
Yuba Sutter dot lives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake self-storage in Plumas Lake. Where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe. Providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumuslake self-storage.com.
Thinking good vibes one day at a time. At Edible Memories, life is sublime. In every bite, you'll find a dream. Join us now, let your heart be. Step inside, sharing the fun. Edible Memories Bakery where happiness runs.
Edible Memories Bakery, 321 Third Street, Marysville. EdibleMemoriesBakery.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties.
And a good morning to you from the yubasutter.live live streaming center in Marysville. We are waiting for the Yuba County Supervisors Meeting to get underway. They've had a few technical issues to work out. They're going to have a presentation from what is called RCRC. Gary Bradford from down in the Plumas Lake areas back in Washington DC. And I believe he's participating from there. He's also one of the county supervisors representatives on the RCRC committee. So we are standing by here, waiting for them to pick up this feed from the Yuba County Government Center in Marysville. We hope you are able to stand by for that. Sounds like they're ready to begin.
Can we hear?
And maybe they'll tilt the camera down a little bit.
We can hear you and we can.
We are good to go.
Yes.
We are good to go. Welcome. Yuba County Board of Supervisors Meeting, Tuesday, September 24th. Natalie.
Welcome to the Yuba County Board of Supervisors Meeting. As a courtesy to others, please turn off cell phones or other electronic devices which may disrupt the meeting. If attending via Zoom, please have your microphones muted at times when you are not speaking. All items on the agenda, other than correspondence and board and staff member reports are considered items for which the board may take action. The public will be given opportunity to comment on action items on the agenda when the item is heard and comments shall be limited to three minutes per individual or group.
Thank you. Supervisor Messick is going to lead us on the pledge.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands a nation under God, in physical liberty and justice.
Okay Natalie, roll call.
Supervisor Vasquez. Supervisor Blazer.
Here.
Supervisor Fuhrer. Supervisor Bradford is absent. Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay consent agenda, all matters listed under consent agenda are considered to be action items that can be routine and can be enacted in one motion. Do we have any comments from the board on this? No, anybody from the public? And we'll take a motion. We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Today we have two special presentations. First one is from the Rural County Representatives of California RCRC regarding RCRC's strategic plan. And we have. Good morning. I think we're good. No, not yet.
Hi, okay. Oh, good morning, thank you for your time. I'm Craig Ferguson with RCRC. This is not an action item, it's just informational. You know, we've got 40 members of RCRC, Yuba County being one of them. And I see Supervisor Bradford is not here, he actually sits on the board. Supervisor Messick, you're the alternative. And you guys have a voice for RCRC, you make decisions on behalf of your counties and the counties as a whole, as members of RCRC, as well as its affiliates. I'm here just to kind of give a quick update, strategic plan of RCRC, where we're heading, and also its affiliates and what we're doing. So I need, I just close the drawer. Okay.
Sorry about that.
That was a good welcome, I like that. So RCRC, you can see, it's got affiliate entities, which I'll touch on each one very briefly, but the divisions of RCRC, Government Affairs, Economic Development, Business Development, and Administration and Finance. And did I go one too far? No, I think I did right. So you can see where RCRC focuses, you've got state policy and federal policy areas, forest health, wildfire, water drought, broadband, housing, energy, health access, working with the CPUC on quite a few initiatives on the federal side, same thing with forest health, wildfire, water drought, farm bill, infrastructure, as well as some ad hoc committees with the, that some of the board members sit on as part of an ad hoc to share feedback. I think this is kind of in, but you can see there's a Williamson Act ad hoc and a road infrastructure ad hoc. And then one of the affiliates is Golden State Finance Authority. And so RCRC was formed in 72 and in 93, Golden State Finance Authority was formed and GSFA's goal was to provide housing to low to moderate income home buyers and also provide a revenue source to RCRC in order for RCRC to keep its initiatives up for folks in rural California because it's lobbying and it's advocacy, it's working on all those issues from fires to waters to forest resiliency. But Yuba County pays annual dues, but very, very little. I don't even know the number, it's probably 10,000 bucks a year or something. So the money coming from counties doesn't allow RCRC to aspire. So Golden State Finance Authority, as well as the other affiliates, provide a mission of what it does, as well as provides a revenue source to RCRC to keep it going. And RCRC's, as I said, been around since 72 and has done quite a bit. We started off with very few board, very few members and is now up to 40 members, 58 counties in California, 40 of them are part of RCRC and there's many more trying to get in, but we've already said stop because it's rural California, you've got CSAC, go do that, it focuses on rural, but we've got quite a few calling our CEOs saying we want into RCRC and we've got a kind of a cap on population, some have grandfathered in, but the population is 500,000 or less. And but it is, it is nice to know that the counties want to join RCRC because we've been doing a very good job for the counties. Golden State Finance Authority, we financed over 16 billion in mortgage financing, over a billion in whole house energy retrofit financing. We've given about 4.5 million back to victims of fires and we're focused on infrastructure financing and I'll touch on a little bit on some of the affiliates that have stemmed from Golden State Finance Authority. In Yuba County, we've helped 678 individuals purchase a home with a little over $5 million in down payment assistance. The down payment assistance is the money that you need to buy a home, you can't get the money from a bank or realtor, you can get it from your mom, but if your mom doesn't have it, you can get it from Golden State Finance Authority and it's either in the form of a second mortgage or a gift that you don't pay back. So that's kind of been its mission and again, over 16 billion in financing since its inception. An affiliate called National Home Buyers Fund, which there's five board members of RCRC that sit on National Home Buyers Fund. Golden State Finance Authority has the same board members as RCRC and so decisions are made by the same board members. National Home Buyers Fund actually goes across the country, providing homeownership opportunities and not so much in California because we've got Golden State Finance Authority, but focuses in all 50 states of the United States. But even so, just 56 families helped in Yuba County with over 500,000 in down payment assistance. National, so Golden State's helped over 85,000 families get into a home. National Home Buyers Fund has helped over 45,000 families across the country get into a home and over 11 billion in mortgage financing. So you know, close to 24, 23 billion together and actually more, 26 billion together in financing. The program was started when Patrick started, he wanted to put a program together for county employees. And so we did put a program together for county employees and it's an assistance program. The idea is to use a county to retain employees or bring employees in and offer them an incentive of homeownership. And the idea here is we've provided down payment assistance, it's in the form of a second, but there's no payments on the second and that second is used for that down payment that you're required by FHA or Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac, which you cannot get from anyone but your mom or us or another government entity. And so assistance is up to 5.5%. I can see here that two employees of Yuba County have used this program. I think this is as of July. When I go around to the other counties, this is kind of an exciting program because some of the other counties have trouble retaining or obtaining employees into their county. And so this has been quite a decent program since inception and 119 employees of the, with, because all our counties have used this program to purchase a home. Golden State Connect Authority, this is a new JPA about two years ago, and this is focusing on broadband in rural California. You know, I think we all noticed when COVID hit, rural California was in very bad shape when it came, it's still in bad shape when it comes to broadband, but there was many, many kids out of school, not able to access internet, not able to even, you know, attend school for that matter, for that reason. And we've been working quite well with the CPUC. We've partnered with a company out of Utah called Utopia Fiber, who's also a government entity and they're the largest municipality owned and operating of broadband infrastructure where they build it, they own it, but then they open it up to the internet service providers. It could be AT&amp;T, Verizon, whoever, Monkey Brains. But the idea is it's open access, provides competition and consumers can choose who they want. If they don't like AT&amp;T, they can go to Comcast, they can go to Monkey Brains, they can do whatever. I live literally six miles from downtown Sacramento, I have one option, it's Comcast, that's all I got. This idea is, you know, and it's going to be fiber, which is gigabyte speed and you know, we're getting close, we've been working with the CPUC and we're looking at getting a $50 million. It started up in $450 million, but the governor's wiped off half the budget, most of the budget, but we're still possibly going to get the 50 million and that's going to sit there, what we call is in a loan loss reserve, we're not going to use it and we're going to go ahead and sell bonds, private money to fund the development of this broadband. And Utopia Fiber's been using this strategy and have never dipped into their loan loss because the revenues generated have provided the debt service for these private bond owners, bond investors, and that's what we intend. And so if you've got 50 million sitting there as a loan loss reserve, we go talk to investors, they're more willing to say, yeah, okay, there's an insurance there, we'll jump in and invest because we know we've got a backing in case your revenues fall short. And so that's the goal and again, CPUC wants an open access program because the big guys out there have not really gone into rural California. They say they do, they may light up one small area, but they have not lit up anything. And our idea is to light up, you know, rural California over the next few years. And we're looking at breaking ground, probably middle of 2025 and the first customer, you know, in the fourth quarter of 2025. And so it's pretty exciting that we have diversified out of that. It's not just where RCRC started, you know, government advocacy, lobbying, it's then housing, it's then energy and now it's broadband. And then we go from broadband to Golden State Natural Resources, another entity we started several years ago, and this is to focus on forest resiliency. And the idea here is, as you can see, we've purchased a property in Lassen County, we've purchased a property in Tooluma County, the high level, and also we've got into a 20-year master stewardship agreement with the US National Forest Service, which owns probably 80% of California forests, which gives us access to the forest. The problem with California is you can't access the forest because it's spotted owl and our idea is to go get that dead wood out because that's what's fueling the fires and it's just lying there and we want to take that dead wood out and use it for something. And right now the idea is to turn it into pellets, which is those two facilities we've bought and we're going to issue debt and build the facilities. We've recently gone into contract, entered a partnership with a company called Drax, which is the largest user and producer of pellets in the world, they're based out of the UK. And they are guiding us through this because technically we don't know anything about wood and pellets, but our idea is as Golden State Natural Resources, looking at the devastation of the fires we've seen, is to get in there and do something about it because no one else is and we've got this stewardship agreement with the US Forest Service to at least get us access. Right now we're in the middle of an environmental review. It's getting close to where we're going to have it submitted and then we're going to get sued because that's what happens when you do an environmental review. We've put money aside to deal with that, we're going to win it, but all that review's going to say is that you've got to do this, 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 and we're going to check yes, 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 get the environmental approval and then that's when we start talking to takeout providers of pellets, which we're already talking to, we're just not at that point we can do it because of this review and issue some debt. And the idea is pellets, as we've moved down this avenue, it may not be pellets in the end, it may just be wood chips because people can use wood chips for, including Drax, the one we've partnered with, is quite happy with wood chips. But our idea is it's not, we're not a wood pellet company, we're not a wood chip company, we're a forest resiliency and we want the wood out of the forest in our counties. So that's the idea there. The only way to do that is to make some money out of it because we can't fund it out of our pockets, so we want something to sell to keep funding the ability to get into these forests and take the wood out. Another affiliate is a Environmental Services Joint Powers Authority and that was formed in 93 and it's more of a, no, how do you say, just environmental help. I mean, from mattresses, getting rid of mattresses to oil, to stuff like that, it's been around for a while. You can see the members, if not quite the 40 members, but provides regulatory advocacy, technical assistance to 26 of our counties, supports local public education campaigns and administers grants for recycling of hazardous waste and management programs. So just another one of these entities under the umbrella of RCRC. Then an old company that went dormant and we've rejuvenated it, we brought it out of dormancy, is the Rural Advancement Institute. And this is more to provide tours and education to public officials, those from the larger cities, and bring them to rural California to teach them about rural California because they don't care half the time, they don't know, they're in their San Diegos and LA's and San Franciscos. We've already done one, we did it in Mariposa County and it was very successful, brought some legislative people and they had a, it was a great tour and we were hoping to increase that. We've reached out to a lot of our stakeholders to, this is a 501(c)(3), we've reached out to a lot of our stakeholders on the banking and finance side to help us fund it in order to create more opportunities to do tours. And it goes from agriculture to housing to, you know, battery infrastructure, prisons, you can see the list of where it goes, but it's really just education to those public officials who don't really spend much time in rural California at all. Bring them to rural California, show them the beauty of rural California and just let them know that, you know, you survived because of rural California and we need some knowledge being shared. I think that may, yeah, that's it. Appreciate the time and if there's any questions, you've been very quiet.
I don't have a question, but I'm almost overwhelmed, I didn't realize all of the different factors that you have going on. And I have a question maybe for Kevin. How well do our employees, are they aware of all these different programs? And I see you're looking in the audience.
Yeah, I was looking at HR specifically, but as far as the employee orientation, I'm putting Tiffany on the spot as well, as far as making sure, especially on the Golden State Finance Authority and that down payment assistance, is that something that she's nodding her head? So that's already kind of in the mix, but that's something we could push out to our existing employees as well, a little bit more as far as making sure that there's awareness there. We've done that in the past, we can continue to do that.
And we have staff that, we do lender trainings, we do realtor trainings and we can do trainings for your staff, just to let them know about the program, how to go about it, how to obtain a lender to get the program closed. There's another program we've got, it doesn't necessarily affect Yuba County, but working with HCD, the Housing Community Development, where for the 10 counties that were affected by the 2018 and 2020 fires, this is money that comes from the federal government, from HUD, to HCD who have used us because they couldn't do it themselves and we have this bandwidth to work with lenders and realtors and home buyers, but they're offering up to 350,000 for down payment assistance if you move out of a high fire area to an insurable area. And so the idea is you've got to qualify for as much as you can, let's say you qualify for a $300,000 home, but the home is $600,000, you get $300,000 from HCD via administrating it and it's forgiven, it's a loan, it's not repaid and it's forgiven after five years of living there. But we started this two months ago and there's been 75 applications already for homeowners getting out of those risks. And they can move anywhere in California, they don't have to stay in the same county they're in. They just got hired once and out of the high fire area to a low or a non-risky area, but that's another program that we're running right now, which is kind of exciting too. But yeah, if Kevin, if your group wants to catch up with ours, to do a training or whatever, just let me know and we'll get that sorted out. We've been doing it for most of the counties. I think we've done it for you guys too already, but we can always follow up and do another one.
Good, anybody else from the board?
Yeah, through the chair. Have you reached out to the real estate board or are you, that's not a?
We are members of the real estate board, Board of Realtors for Yuba County. Yeah, we are members, so we do, we do send info and sometimes attend their monthly meetings just to talk about the programs. I don't remember last time we did it for Yuba, but we are members of the Yuba County Board of Realtors.
And then on the pellet situation, you do know we're clearing what, 275,000 acres and have been for the past five years and putting a biomass plant in Campinville. So I don't know if you've approached any of the people working up there as far as, you know, utilizing the clearing.
They just got hired once and out of the high fire area to a low or a non-risky area. But that's another program that we're running right now, which is kind of exciting too. But yeah, if Kevin, if your group wants to catch up with ours to do a training or whatever, just let me know and we'll get that sorted out. We've been doing it for most of the counties. I think we've done it for you guys too already, but we can always follow up and do another one.
Good. Anybody else from the board?
Yeah, through the chair. Have you reached out to the real estate board or are you, that's not a?
We are members of the real estate board, Board of Realtors for Yuba County. Yeah, we are members, so we do, we do send info and sometimes attend their monthly meetings just to talk about the programs. I don't remember last time we did it for Yuba, but we are members of the Yuba County Board of Realtors.
And then on the pellet situation, you do know we're clearing what 275,000 acres and have been for the past five years. And putting a biomass plant in Campinville. So I don't know if you've approached any of the people working up there as far as, you know, utilizing the clearing stuff that we have so you can make pellets out of it.
It's right now, we're, I think the problem right now is whatever wood is taken out, no one knows what to do with. So there's just piles of wood sitting everywhere. We were up in Lassen County not that long ago and there's piles of wood taller than this building. And so.
Yeah, we got a, we got a plant going up there.
Yeah, so if there's, I'll get, there's two of my colleagues that are folks on that. Terrence, who you've known Terrence Rogers, I'll let him know. But what, you know, our main goal is get through this review and then start talking to purchasers of whatever biomass we make, which we're intending on pellets. And the idea is Europe is gung ho on pellets. They want to get away from coal. Drax is in Europe, they have the customers and they want the wood. And so once we get that, once we get someone to take it, we can start taking wood and.
Sierra County has a biomass plant that's not functioning in there now. And they could use all the help they can get. Discretion giggles.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, through the chair. Freshly back from my very first RCRC annual conference. So I was blown away with everything you guys do and so much more even than you presented here. That Drax company has a huge facility in Houston, I think.
Houston is a.
Their headquarters?
Well, the headquarters are London. They've got a huge facility out there than Houston is their Texas facility. They're building a plant up in Longview, Washington State. And their goal is to get here to California and build a bioenergy carbon capture plant, which is you can use chips for that. And this is pretty much, I think you saw the panel where they take the carbon and put it underground and then sell the credits for capturing the carbon. And so they want to build that in California and they want to work with us to help them on the lobbying side, the government side, get them through that process. And then there can be a takeout for whatever we go in there and take out of the forest. But yeah, and then the, I don't know if you saw the Thursday morning panel with the boat from Japan making it to Crescent City. I thought that was a great story.
Yeah, that was, there wasn't a dry eye in the room, I can tell you that. So it was a very touching story and ongoing. It's really neat. So I really enjoyed it. And then also we did a, at dinner, we had a raffle. Our Yuba County put together a basket. And so whoever's the chair of whichever county gets to donate that money to different groups. And the guy from Monterey County got up and talked about all his charities. Our basket brought in a very good return. I personally bought the Nevada County basket. So I'm still enjoying going through all the different things. But yeah, it was a really, really eye opening event for me and to see everything you guys offer.
It was, it was record breaking for charity money raised. I think it was over 110,000 when Chris Lopez, Monterey County Chair, our current RCRC Chair and Chair of Monterey County, he was talking at first on how even 5, 10,000 per charity is amazing to these charities. And he's got five picked and 110 plus thousand later, they're getting more than the 5, 10,000. So he was ecstatic and it was a good, it was a good night.
Yeah. So if there's anything we can do here, if you, if you and your staff want a tour of Yuba County, if it could help you represent us better in Sacramento, you know, please feel free to reach out. So we give tours of our dam and powerhouse and things like that and ag tours, so.
Yeah, I did a tour of the dam. I've been at RCRC 17 years. I think my second year here, we did a tour of the dam. It was impressive, but it would be cool to bring that back. And even going back to the RAI, the education touring group, that would be a great one to bring, you know, the big city public officials to the show how, you know, amazing it actually is.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a, just a last passing thought is the farm bill. A lot of conversation about that farming in general is pretty dire. I don't know if you have any high points you want to mention about the farm bill?
Nope, I don't, nothing.
I should know.
But our lobbying advocacy group are all over it. They, they.
Legislative advocacy is a growth industry. I was just curious, but yeah, farming is in pretty bad shape right now.
Right.
Anybody else?
Through the chair. One thing I forgot is I've been RCRC member many years. And our question is, we looked into making counties less than 100,000 exempt from some of the environmental laws that are killing us up here. Is there any, any indication that that might be something RCRs can look into? Solar fire suppression systems in houses, which raise the price of the house. And then they're looking for affordable housing. So by eliminating those two things, you would have affordable housing.
Right. And they look into anything that the, at the board as a whole wants them to. The majority of the board wants something looked into, they look into. We've got on the legislative side and the advocacy side, we've got folks, Tracy, Brian focuses on housing bills. And so even when things come out that affect me, and I sit on a different board for housing in California where there's bills that this board sometimes wants to support, where I don't really know if I should or not because I'm at RCRC, I call Tracy and like, am I supporting this or not? She'll say, no, absolutely not. And so they are very up to speed. So I think this is something that at board meetings, bring up the solar, the fire suppressant for, because I think most of our counties feel the same way as what you're just talking about. And then it's up to us to go, you know, support a bill or not support a bill and all put forth something to make a bill and take it from there. But they've done a pretty good job with all the bills they tackle.
Those two things should make housing here real affordable instead of the way it is right now.
Well, this is eye opening. I had no idea of all the different programs that you had. So I'm really happy that you were able to come in. Anybody else have anything? No? Thank you for your time.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
The presentation.
Oh, I have one comment from the public. Tom, do you want to come up?
Would like to, just through the chair, ask for a clarification. When, when you first talked about the excess of wood that's not being logged in California anymore because of an owl issue. And that you said, hey, we've got this material. What took a while, you had to listen to the entire presentation for me at least, to understand that you in fact already have a customer. Because my first, my first impression was, well, why are we working with a company out of UK? Don't we have anybody here in America that makes wood pellets? And then it became more clear, especially towards the end, that this wood actually would be exported for use in Europe. Is my understanding correct?
Right. There's a huge demand for pellets. So we've got to be able to pay to keep the forest resiliency going. And there's a huge demand for pellets in Japan, other parts of Asia and Europe, including Poland to England that all want to get out of coal. And the nuclear plants have all been shut down as we know. So that's the idea now. If we get to that point, great. If not, we still want to get the wood out. And if we ever make a pellet, you know, if there's a takeout for that, if there's a takeout for another product that is probably cheaper to make than a pellet, then fine. But our goal is to take the wood out, the dead wood, just the not.
Personally myself, I think we have plenty of owls, but okay, thank you very much.
All right. Once again, thank you.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
So next we have a presentation to receive the fiscal year annual report from the Measure K Citizens Oversight Committee and welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Fred Morzenzki and I'm the chairman of the Measure K Oversight Committee. I'm pleased to be here this morning for the purpose of presenting what is now the third annual report for the Measure K Oversight Committee. This report, as in the past, contains information pertaining to the revenues and expenditures of the 1% sales tax generated by Measure K and the committee's conclusions regarding the use of this funding. Before I go further, I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce Vice Chairman Richard Webb, who is in the audience. Lori Wojan, our secretary, was unable to make meeting today. And as you know, on your agenda, we currently have two vacancies and you'll be making appointments later this morning to fill those. As you know, while Measure K became effective in 2019 and revenues began to accrue at that time, expenditures were delayed due to litigation until fiscal year 21, 22, when the funds were allocated by the board through the county budget adoption process. Your board and previous boards for many years have consistently prioritized public safety and recognition of government's primary purpose, the protection of its citizens. Limited revenues, however, often constrain the board's desire to further enhance its goals towards that end. Needless to say, a strong public safety system is the foundation for the building and supporting of a vibrant, viable and sustainable community. It's well documented. Efforts to pursue economic growth, community development, enhanced educational opportunities and the like are thwarted by unsafe environments in many jurisdictions in California and throughout the country, which had previously ignored this common sense reality, are now revising policies, legislation and funding to enable safer cities and communities. I, I think we all agree it's about time that that's been done. Voters and taxpayers of Yuba County, however, recognized this dynamic early on and supported this sales tax measure back in 2019. The results of the board's allocations of these funds, which have led to a safer county are evident in our robust economic growth, housing sales, business development. Since its inception, Measure K has generated revenues to date of approximately $42.5 million, with $11.5 million expended during fiscal year 23, 24. And although this is a general sales tax measure, the board's continued commitment to public safety, specifically law enforcement, fire services, essential public safety functions and other essential supportive services, it's reflected in the allocation of these funds. 80% of the revenues allocated are earmarked specifically for Yuba County, supplementing existing funding for the sheriff's office, the district attorney, the probation department, other general essential services, including code enforcement and other supporting departments. A total of 20% of the revenues are distributed to nine fire districts within the county. Specific agency allocations are based on an agreed distribution formula developed by the districts themselves. In summary, having conducted a comprehensive review of the fiscal reports detailing revenues and expenditures for 23, 24, the committee is of the opinion the board's actions are consistent with both the spirit and letter of Measure K itself and the implementing county ordinance. In closing, I'd like to take a moment to thank Kevin and his staff, staff from the Auditor Controller's Office for their assistance to the committee, providing outstanding support during our review process, coordinating committee meetings and assisting in the overall development of the detailed informative report you're presented with today. On behalf of the committee, we, the committee also would like to thank you for the opportunity to serve in the capacity of providing transparency, accountability and oversight by citizens regarding the implementation of this measure for both the voters and taxpayers of Yuba County. Thank you. That concludes my presentation. You've got copies of the report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions or comments you might have.
Well, I want to thank the whole committee, you know, for volunteering your time. This is very important and the transparency to the public is very important. And it's been a really good program. Anybody else on the board?
Chair.
Go ahead, Andy. Go ahead. I'll watch you.
The second paragraph of Yuba County Measure K Oversight Committee says Measure K provides a secure local revenue stream to the county that shall be used entirely to maintain and improve general essential services for the benefit of unincorporated areas of the county. All the proceeds of the tax levying imposed here under shall be accounted for and paid into Measure K trust fund or account designated. So my question is, we don't get into economic development with the Measure K funds. That was the original intent for Measure K, which was to maintain and improve general essential services for the benefit, the safety of the people of Yuba County. And that's the reason it was passed as a general tax. And the board has supported the use of it. And you've done a great job in reporting it. The, but it's for sheriff departments, it's for fire departments, first responders, that type of safety, not economic development or any other use. This, the reason for the board going in that direction originally was to be able to get the tax to pass. But it would be used specifically for public safety within the unincorporated areas of the county. And I hate to see it. It's a, it's not a cookie jar. It's something to protect the citizens. And we as a board throughout the years that this, once this was finally released in 21, that it would be only used for the safety of the citizens, public of Yuba County. So and that's pretty much what has been done.
The issue of a specific tax versus a general tax was the subject of the litigation that followed the passage of the measure. And it was concluded that this is a general tax, which is available really for all county functions. And as I pointed out, and the reason for my reference to economic development is the nature of the importance of public safety to be able to provide the environment in which businesses and communities can thrive. And certainly this board has been very supportive of those as reflected in the report in terms of where the money went. It certainly has enhanced public safety within the county, which in turn has been able to provide the kind of environment which draws business, draws educational opportunities and the like to the community. So you're to be complimented for that. Any other questions?
I think so far.
Through the chair. I, you know, again, I was here when it was fought over. And the reason we got it through was the fact that we said as a board of supervisors, we will only use this for public safety, for first responders, for essential items that, that not general funds, economic development or anything. That's the, that's the promise this board made when we, when you passed this thing. And you know, I just, it's, you look at the state and the feds, they use everything and spend everything and they're upside down $100 billion in the state. The Fed is in the trillions. What we tried to do is have a sense of responsibility for the board to do what it said it was going to do. to do, which was safety.
Well, and I think.
No economic development at all.
Are you ready?
We'll have to agree the expenditures, as they're run out in this report, reflect that commitment, and you'd be complimented for it.
People see it as a, as a prime target for those without the willpower to actually live within their means.
Thanks, Andy. I think Supervisor Messick has a couple of words.
Yeah, through the chair. I just wanted to thank you for the report and the presentation. Formerly being on the Hallwood District 10 Fire Board, I know it was very important to us that that got approved because it was that or we were going to have to go do a partial tax or something to keep it float. So it made a huge difference when you, when you sit on those boards, you really see what it'll do. And hopefully, we'll get you guys, your guys' panel filled up today.
Yeah, great. We'll look forward to the new members being appointed.
Yeah. No, thank you.
Anything else?
I don't think from the board, any public comment. Tom?
Good morning, Board again. Tom McCord, I'll go first. Thank you very much. Through the, through the chair. You mentioned that so far, $11.5 million has just been spent. Is that correct?
No. So far, $45.5 million have been spent since the inception of the measure. This fiscal year, 11.5, I think was.
Okay, then I guess I wrote it down. My notes are, I'll have to go back to the video and check it. I wrote down 42.5 million generated.
Forty-two point five, that's correct.
And 11.5 spent.
Spent this fiscal year.
Okay.
For reporting fiscal year.
Right, I understand. Okay. So the balance is located in a savings account, or?
The, well, first off, the board started allocating this three years ago.
Yes.
And so those, part of that 42.5 million dollars that have been allocated previously or to date have been spent in prior fiscal years. And so every fiscal year, there is a carryover, and I'm not totally.
If I could, through the chair, maybe I'll help with the specifics. And it's contained in the report. The ending balance in the Measure K fund was 2.7 million at the end of last fiscal year.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that was my next question. What's the balance? And then my next question through the chair would just be, when's the sunset date? Because if I remember correctly, this was a nine-year.
I believe it was 10.
Nine or 10 years.
So the voters approved Measure K in November of 2018. It, it sunsets in November of 2028.
Okay, cool. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom. Richard, did you have a question?
I do, thank you. Good morning. My name is Richard Everly, Auditor Controller. A couple of things I want to clarify. First of all, working with the, the Committee to Oversight Committee for the Measure K money was, is fantastic. They're very dedicated to their positions, and I appreciate the opportunity to work with them. That committee was formed to, to make sure that the, that the resources are spent according to the board's allocation. There was one piece of clarification I wanted to make in that when the, the bond was initially, or the measure was initially passed, it was, it was not proposed as a special tax. And so it was proposed as a general tax, which was a subject of litigation, which the county ultimately prevailed in that litigation. The money that was collected was put in a savings account and not spent until the, till the litigation was, was resolved. But the, the, the resources are spent for essential services. It's not specific to, to public safety. However, the, the county does spend a significant amount of its discretionary resources, close to 75%, I think at this point, on public safety. And so the allocation of those funds to public safety is not necessarily a commitment of the, of the, of the measure, because it was a general measure. It's a, it's at the direction of the board, using their discretionary resources to determine that that's being made. I want to make sure that clarification is clear, because there might be some people who are listening who are confused about that, but I want to make sure that, that we're clear on that. So I just want to, if there's any questions about that or any comments to that nature, I want to make sure that we're clarified and make sure that we are honoring the intent that the voters approved that legislation or that measure.
Good. I think that was, clarification was necessary, so that's good. Thanks.
Thank you.
I think we are good. We appreciate your effort.
Thank you.
So we're up to public communications. Natalie?
Any person may speak about any subject of concern provided is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and is not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public communication shall be limited to a total of 15 minutes, and each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, speakers are requested to fill out a request to speak card and submit it to the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors. Please note, no board action can be taken on comments made under this heading. And through the chair, we have two requests to speak cards and no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. Who do we have first?
Tony Farley.
Good morning. Tony Farley, South Star County, San Jose City. Thank you for service. Kevin, Kevin is here, also known as Chief Saxon. Thank you, County Council, John Bender, also known as a, as a, working as Sacramento. Thank you, Don Blazer. That's good. He is, he is the 1970s cowboy farmer. And John Miss, another cowboy farmer. And great backwater, Sacramento. And again, Seth Fuller, Diversity Officer, Diversity Chamber. He also saw him at the Mon, the Mon event, suffering the, being on communism, like suffering from communism. And Seth, Andy Vasquez, the Marine Corps veteran, and also Reserve D. Thank you, Sheriff Will Aronson for his service. Also, Kyle, Chief Love. Thank you, Tom Porter, that's fucking to the committee. He's part of that, he has tapped. Thank you, Jereen. He is co-foresterman. Someday, I hope that someday, and may not someday, but I can see the marijuana stuff. Also, thank you, Jennifer, HHS. Thank you, Dr. Lil. She is our doctor. Thank you for your service.
Thanks, Tony. And next?
Renick House.
Good morning, Chairman Blazer and Yuba County Board of Supervisors. My name is Renick House. I'm Supervisor-elect for District 2 in Yuba County. Today, I wanted to bring forward to you guys and ask for the board to kind of make a priority of a property out at 4533 Feather River Boulevard. The property's been on fire, on and off, since November of last year. Most days, smoldering and fire still exist. Kyle Hagstrom and the Linda County Fire Department are exhausting resources out there regularly, putting a green waste facility fire out. The property's been in place since the 80s. It's a, it's a green waste dump. There's no plan for where the waste is going to go. The owners are not keeping the community safe by leaving access for firefighters or maintaining their piles. The fires that have been going on have made some, some really terrible smoke for the neighbors, including my, my parents, who are pretty aging. My parents actually have a property, their home is directly adjacent to the, the site. But there's, between, between the property and L Avenue, there's, there's about 38 homes that are at risk of, of being burned down if there's just the slightest wind. The embers from those piles are burning and blowing through the neighborhoods, not to mention all of the health concerns for all the people there. I've talked to numerous people who've had issues with their breathing, cardiac issues, things like that, that are being aggravated by the smoke. And I just think it's time for our county to make it a priority. There has been staff intervention where they've, they've taken and sought state money to solve the issue, but as everybody knows, including Andy, is that the state funding comes with a lot of ties, and it takes a long time to get the money. And this fire just needs to be put completely out, and the site needs to be abated. So I'm just asking the board to make that site a priority, maybe go out and tour the facility and keep it in the front of our minds until, until the fires are completely out and the site's abated. Normally, our county is pretty good about getting rid of contamination and stored vehicles and things like that, but this is a big risk, and it's, it's harming a lot of members of Seth's district specifically. And Seth's been in the loop on pushing forward with the, the staff recommendations, but I just need the support of the board. So if you could, please keep that on the front of your mind. I would appreciate it. And thank you.
Thanks, Renick. Thanks for keeping that awareness up.
Through the chair. Don't we have a, an existing code enforcement case open on that? I think that, I just question.
Jeremy, did you want to speak to that or not?
Yes. Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Yeah, there is a, there is a case, an active case on this site. In this instance, environmental health is the lead. This is a regulated industry, although the business itself has not been regulated very well. Staff is working with the state, Cal Recycle specifically. I believe money has been secured, and it's just a matter of time before enforcement moves forward for some abatement activities.
I'm just not clear. Are we, is there, are we actively trying to put the fire out, or what's happening down there?
Well, that would be something that we'd want to ask Chief Hagstrom. I know that, that his office does respond as, as the flare-ups occur, and he does expend resources and has for, for some time with the accumulation of the green waste facility. Certainly a complex, from what I understand from Clark McCall, our Environmental Health Director, very complex issue with the state as, as green facilities, green waste facilities go and trying to have a place for that waste to go and properly be disposed of. So a little out of my wheelhouse, but, but I can tell you that Clark McCall has been working on this, is working directly and intimately with the state to secure funding for abatement activities.
If I may, on the timeframe for the abatement, are you thinking it's going to be in the next week, month? What, what's the timeframe of the horizon of that actually being?
It's my understanding, the last email that I, I received, which was just information only, was that the documentation was prepared and ready to be signed. And so once that is complete, then the contractor selection process, and there may already be a contractor selected. So I, it would be a bit ambitious to say within a week, but I, I would say probably within the next 30 days, I, I would hope to see some abatement activities occurring. I may be out of turn, really, that, that question is best answered by Clark, but I believe that we're that close.
Kevin, did you have something?
Through the chair, I'm Kevin Perkins, Assistant Community Development Director. Jeremy's correctly answered the question. Everything he said was accurate. Right now, it's just a waiting game with the state. The state's attorneys have been reviewing the contract to be able to offer the county money for the abatement, and the goal is to get that contract to the property owner by the end of this week. It's basically a clean and lien, so the property owner has to accept that by Cal Recycle offering this money, their property is going to be leaned. So if they go to sell the property, they have to reimburse the state for the cleanup activities.
If I may, I guess my issue is, is that we recently had a unpermitted truck repair depot that exploded and caused quite the fire in my district as well. And so to have another smoldering fire that's been there for months, we do want to see that get resolved. Can we go ahead and put on the agenda for Clark to give us an update at our next meeting about what's going to?
Shouldn't be a problem.
That, that would be appropriate. I was going to say this was a public comment, so we don't want to get too far into it since it wasn't on today's agenda, but that's something we could put on a future agenda.
Yeah, great. So at our next meeting, we can have Clark. That way, Jeremy isn't on the hook for it, and he can give us an update that the signatures happened, that the, that the operator has been selected, and that the abatement is proceeding. That would be fantastic.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we pushed the rules a little bit, but I think it was worthwhile. We're at county.
Through, through the chair, I apologize. There is a hand raised on Zoom now.
Oh, there is? Okay.
From Marie Vu.
Good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Marie Vu. I wanted to express my sincere appreciation for the hard work and dedication you have shown in building our community. Your focus on maintaining public safety is commendable and reflects the value we hold. A safe and strong community is the foundation upon which we can thrive, and your efforts in this regard do not go unnoticed. I'd like to, I'd like to extend a special thank you to Supervisor Vasquez for hosting a town hall meeting last Thursday in District 1. Engaging directly with constituents is critical. And these forums serve as a platform for open dialogue, allowing us to voice our concerns and ideas. It fosters a sense of trust and accountability. Additionally, I want to express my gratitude to Supervisor Fur for attending the USA State 175th Annual Commemoration of China on Friday. Your presence at this significant event underscores our commitment to honoring and celebrating the diverse cultural heritage that enriches our community. Thank you all for your commitment to our community's well-being. Together, we are, together, we are building a future that honors our values and keeps public safety front and center. Let's continue to work together to ensure that our community remains a place where families can thrive and freedoms are upheld. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. So now, we are going to do county departments. All matters listed under county departments are action items, which will be considered and voted on separately. And I believe Kevin?
This one, yep, you can hear me. Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Kevin Mallon, County Administrator. I'll kind of kick this one off. This is really a, a board item, but just a little background, and actually, I want to kind of follow up on the, the conversation from the special presentation and just make sure, kind of setting the groundwork on, on why this committee is important. So the, the voters approved Measure K in November of 2018, as we discussed during the special presentation. It is a general tax, and so the, how those funds are spent are at the discretion of the Board of Supervisors each year, right? It's not, it was, if it was a special tax, then the voters would have designated how much money goes to each department within the county, or, you know, something to that effect, the specifics. But this was a general tax, so they, they entrusted the board to make the, the right choice each fiscal year on how to expend the revenue that comes in. So the board, and that, and, and part of that, kind of checks and balances, they, they set up in the measure, and it was actually established and it's, it's codified in county ordinance, it's chapter 5.60. It outlined this committee of a citizen oversight committee to make sure that not only, you know, the public's entrusting the board on how to expend these funds each year, but also you'd have this oversight committee that would prepare an annual report to take a look at how the, the board is designated, the, the Measure K resources. Just, it is kind of an aside, the, the, the public safety aspect is not lost on the board, right? The, the board, we, we know that's front and center, that, that is the highest priority, you know, as far as county services go. And so in that Measure K annual report, we, we intentionally put in there the, specific on public safety, the law enforcement departments, sheriff, probation, district attorney office, what the, the baseline general fund commitment was in those departments, starting when the measure was adopted in 2018 to present, so that that way the public can, can see clearly that not only have we, we maintained what the general fund appropriations were to those departments, but we've been increasing that. And then on top of that, how much of the Measure K revenue specifically was, was provided to those departments, just so it's, it's transparent to the public on, on, on those resources. For example, the Sheriff's Department, just the general fund allocation has increased 86% since the measure passed. And then on top of that last fiscal year, there was an additional seven and a half million in Measure K that was provided just to the Sheriff's Department. So there, there's, there's quite an investment to the, the law enforcement groups specifically as part of our public safety efforts to make sure we have safe communities. Okay, so that aside, so moving on to the, the committee itself. So we have two vacancies. The way the ordinance is structured, when the board makes an appointment, it's for a two-year term, and the appointee can serve three two-year terms. And, and as we discussed under special presentations, this measure expires in 2028. So in theory, whoever the board appoints currently, they could, if they were reappointed, make it through to the end of, of the, the measure itself through 2028. So they're, they're currently. So they're, they're currently, as far as the three members that are appointed, actually, let me, let me start with, the, the five members that are appointed to this committee are at large. There's no requirement to have them district-specific, other than they need to reside within the unincorporated portion of the county. But there's been a conscious effort by the board to make sure we have a diverse committee, so we have representation from our various unincorporated communities. And currently, we have a representative from District One, a representative from District Four and District Five that are on the, the committee. Or, or I should say, not a representative, a resident of District One, Four and Five. So your applicants that, that the board is, is considering today, you have five applicants. And we have an applicant from District Four. I think we have two applicants from District Three and two applicants from District Two. So you have, you have plenty of choices out there as far as being able to kind of spread representation throughout the unincorporated areas of the county. I don't have any specific recommendations on which of those five you would narrow down to the two that you would select today. I'm going to leave that to the, the board to deliberate on. They, they all appear to be qualified and I'll turn over to the board for discussion.
Through the chair. Kevin, when this tax is going in, we knew that ICE was going to go away. And that really took a chunk out of the sheriff's department, about $6 million. And without this, in the general safety, it would have created a ton of problems for the sheriff's department. So I'm just, I just wanted to add that in, that we knew that ICE was going away. So that was one of the reasons that we specified that, you know, public safety is very important. So.
Through the chair, are you ready for nominations?
Well, I was going to see if we had any more comments before the nominations. If not, I'd like to make a nomination.
Through the chair, there is one request to speak card from the public.
Oh.
On this item.
Okay.
From Rennick House.
Good morning again. Rennick House, District Two Supervisor-elect. During my campaigning, I found that there was an underrepresentation of a lot of, a lot of my district on our committees and a lot of open seats. Today, I, I luckily found a few good candidates for various committees and hopefully they'll be successful in getting appointed going forward. Today, I have Randy, Randy Mitchell from District Two. He's a, a great community servant. He's a chairman of a group called the House of Unity, which is a, a private entity that is building youth centers in our region. He's a business owner, owner of uppercuts hair, hair, what is it called? Hair care, uppercuts salon. So Randy is, he's like me from a low-income family and has, has grown his whole life to be a successful businessman. He also gives back to his community all the time and he's a great example of, of our county's fight against the state of California. So he knows that our money needs to be spent appropriately and do the things that we say we're going to do. But I, I'd just like to put forward that my recommendation is Randy Mitchell. I don't, I don't have a say as, as the board determines, but he is the district candidate that I would support and the people that elected me would also support. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Oh, I'll make a comment on Randy Mitchell. I've known Randy for a long time and echo what Rennick says. He's just giving back to the youth in this community. Helping him with, with education and probably taking kids off the wrong path and putting them on the right path. So I think he'd also be a good candidate.
Okay, I think I started to make a nomination. District Two, I'd like to nominate Pamela Warmack. She's a lifelong resident and farming, et cetera. She's also on our planning commission. She lives in District Ten. So I'd like to make a nomination of Pamela Warmack.
I'll second that nomination.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Why don't we do a roll call vote on that?
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhrer.
No.
Supervisor Bradford is absent. Supervisor Messick.
No.
I'll make a motion to nominate Randy Mitchell for that position.
Second.
Supervisor Vasquez.
No.
Supervisor Blazer.
No.
Supervisor Fuhrer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford is absent. Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
I'll make a nomination for Pamela, sorry, Norma Albertson?
I'll second that.
Supervisor Vasquez.
No.
Supervisor Blazer.
No.
Supervisor Fuhrer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford is absent. Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
We still have a stalemate, apparently.
I would like to nominate Doug Lofton.
Do we have, excuse me?
Like to nominate Doug Lofton.
I'll second. I can second. Oh, go ahead.
Individuals that was involved with the Measure K and knew what was needed in, in Yuba County. And he was the first shovel-ready project that got a check from Obama. And with his guidance and, and engineering skills, he put together a water facility that can be doubled by flipping a switch. I think he's, he's well-qualified and he understands the history of Measure K and the reason we did it the way we did was to be proactive toward the state's demise and, you know, taxes. They're just, they're just billions upside down. They had, they, they spent every cent they could get. So I'd like to make that nomination.
I'll second that one.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhrer.
No.
Supervisor Bradford is absent. Supervisor Messick.
I'm going to vote no, just so we can wait for Gary to get back and make these decisions.
Do we have any more nominations? It looks like we are going to push this.
So, so if I could, through the chair, is, is there an interest from the board in having the chair form an ad hoc and have that ad hoc bring back a recommendation to the full board? Or do you want to have the full board deliberate this at the next board meeting?
I think my thought would be if some of these candidates come in here and spoke to us, I don't know any of them other than Randy. He's the only one I know. So.
Well, I thought it was interesting. We finally had somebody from District 12. We haven't had anybody on a lot of the committees out of District 10. I thought we should get her before she runs screaming the other way.
Well, my thought on, I, I don't know. I don't know her. She's already on the planning commission. She's already serving. This would be to me, an opportunity to let Randy Mitchell get involved in, in the community and serve on a separate board, you know, it's not, nothing against her. She's probably great, but I just like, I like to see more people get involved.
Through the chair. They have the street address marked out here. And I was kind of curious as to where Randy lived in relationship to Marysville, because there's a misnomer out there that Marysville is Edgewater. It's not.
Right.
This is unincorporated areas only.
Right. And I think Rennick. Oh.
Randy? You live within the city limits of Marysville?
No.
Okay.
Where, Randy, where do you actually live? I didn't hear you.
District Ten.
Yeah, I thought you were in District Ten. Okay, thank you.
Do you want to let Randy speak now and we can then vote again?
If he's comfortable in doing that, you're more than welcome to speak.
Do we have anybody else out there?
I think Randy's the only one of these five.
How you guys doing?
Everybody loves public speaking.
Yeah, I'm kind of stage fright. I don't know what to say. I'm just trying to get more involved in my community and make a difference out here and make sure, you know, people, what they say they're going to do, they do. And that's that. I mean, that's just, I just want to make this a better place for my kids, my grandkids and future citizens of Yuba County. You know, I've been through it all, living here, and I'm at that age that I want to see this place flourish and do great things.
Well, you've been doing a great job, Randy.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since you've been doing such a great job, I didn't nominate Randy.
I'll second it.
Supervisor Vasquez.
I thought we already did that.
Going to Randy again?
Yeah, we went back. Seth made another notion.
And then vote again? No.
Supervisor Blazer.
No.
Supervisor Fuhrer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford is absent. Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Okay, I think what we're going to do is probably not an ad hoc committee. I think we will just take a breath and we will put this back on the next agenda. And that'll give us a chance to not violate the Brown Act, but we will have a chance to better contemplate this. So, moving on.
Could I, could I ask one question? Maybe we could ask the candidates to write a brief summary, kind of whatever, application of what they've done, where they grew up, their history and, and things like that.
I think, I think we did offer the candidates to speak, didn't we?
Okay.
I had, I had some questions. A case there was a candidate here, through the chair, I'm sorry of that. The questions I had to ask, I'm just trying to look, look them up here, was have they ever read the strategic plan of Yuba County? And have they ever read the, the report from Measure K Citizens Oversight Committee?
Yeah, those are two good questions. We can ask them again if they would like to come in and make a presentation for the next meeting. But in the meantime, we should each do our research as, as needed.
Okay. I've done my research.
Okay. I think we're good. All right. Ordinance, I think we're, ordinance and public hearings. Natalie, can you read that off?
If you challenge in court the action or decision of the Yuba County Board of Supervisors regarding a zoning, planning, land use or environmental protection matter made at any hearing described in this notice, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at such hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the Yuba County Board of Supervisors at or prior to such hearing. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per individual or group.
And we have Jeremy at five, or if we have the right thing I'm looking at. Five fifty-five.
Five fifty-five. Good morning again, Chair, members of the board. Jeremy Strang with Community Development. Item 555 is an ordinance that introduces some amendments to Chapter 2.41 of the Yuba County Ordinance Code. If your board remembers, you adopted ordinance 1621 on November of 2023, which created the Office of the County Hearing Officer and added Chapter 2.41 to the Yuba County Ordinance Code. As staff began the implementation of the ordinance and attempted to fill the hearing officer position, we found some provisions of the ordinance that were not actually required by the authorizing statute. In other words, Chapter 2.41 went above and beyond to the statute, which is okay, but as such, it created some unnecessary burdensome requirements. So the amendments seek to remove those unnecessary hurdles and will more closely align with our ordinance with the statute. So in summary, what we're asking today is that you, we're going to remove the mandatory panel of hearing officers. I believe now it states three or more. This would allow one or more. Also, that, that, that if they were a previous county employee, they do not need to be separated for greater than six months. We're asking that we more clearly define the terms of the office that are consistent with the way that the hearing officer is appointed. So there's several methods of appointment and we want to make sure that, that that is more consistent and spelled out. And then also for the county to contract with other local public agencies for the hearing officer services. So again, these amendments will intend to align the county ordinance with the statute, remove requirements that were not necessarily intended by the state. And certainly, these changes will ensure convenient, responsive and reliable services to our community and help protect the health, safety and welfare of the public. So I recommend that you waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 2.41 of the Yuba County Ordinance Code. Any questions that you may have, I'm available.
We will open the public hearing and then any questions from the board? Seems fairly straightforward. Any questions from the public? No. So we will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
To waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance as stated in the item 555, today's agenda.
Second. And a roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhrer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford is absent. Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Thank you, Mashen Posters.
Thank you, board.
Natalie, I think we had a couple of correspondents. You might just mention that, or maybe just one.
Yes, we had one item of correspondence, item 552-2024. Receive financial statements and independent auditor's report for Brophy Water District for calendar year ending December 31st, 2023.
Okay, before we go to closed session, it's a chance for board and staff member reports. Starting with Supervisor Vasquez.
Okay. I got a chance to go to the Marysville Joint Unified School District Board Meeting and what a, what an interesting meeting. Got up and left halfway through it because it's, was a, was a adversarial meeting. I also got to attend the Wheatland School Board Meeting and I, I think that maybe we ought to recommend they take a look at what was done on the Wheatland School Board because the Wheatland School, according to their principal out there, has an 80% reading factor in fourth grade, whereas ours is 20%. And I'm, oh, the matter that possibly Marysville Joint Unified School District might concentrate on what their original intent, intent was, which was to teach them how to read, write and be able to add. On the 19th, we had a Longfest Town Hall Meeting that was attended by approximately 20 to 25 people and they really liked the, the boards that we displayed here a couple of times on things that are happening in Yuba County. And on the 20th, we had the, there was a 24-hour POW MIA walk at Beal. And I attended that ceremony on the 20th. They started on the 19th and they read all the POWs and MIAs currently on the roll, roll. And that was quite a sober experience. And let's see. Had Meals on Wheels and I thank Jennifer for coming up with a solution. We're going to have a meeting after this meeting on Zoom with, with Meals on Wheels. Something happened that normally doesn't happen is they cut off meals without telling us and without posting a press release. Apparently, they figured they get too much feedback from that. And I'm, you know, I think that we have to make sure that they let us know when they cut these people off because it was 63 people in our county alone and 63 people in Sutter County. And we're going to straighten that out because Jennifer has found a way to make us whole in the, in the meal program. And I think that's something that we need to, need to make sure to find. And I was going to, Public Works recent accomplishments, last two years. Sometimes we forget everything everybody does. And this is a list. It's not, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but 2019 and 20, we barged $9 million from the Water Agency to fund two road rehabilitation contracts targeting 17 different, 74 different road segments, completed work on the roadside clearing grant, removing excess vegetation from 30 miles of roadways, improvements in the Sycamore Ranch, including installation of a new bathroom and shower. the Sycamore Ranch, including installation of a new bathroom and shower, completed safe routes to school project on Seventh Avenue. 2021, completed a road rehabilitation contract targeting 33 streets for a total of 14.35 miles, for a total of $2,655,458 roadwork. Began construction of the North Beal Complete Streets Project Phase Two, completed construction of 11th Avenue Safe Routes, and completed construction of the Rice's Crossing Bridge Replacement. Began the design phase of Plumas Lake Boulevard, continue acting as lead staff in South Yuba Transportation Improvement Authority, and completed a comprehensive implementation strategy. And there's two pages, I won't go through it all, but thank you very much for listening to that one, and that's it.
Seth? I did have the pleasure of being invited by Marie to the Chinese Association Celebration, and it was, of course, very nice. Da Tang Association, I want to say it was. Coming up, we have Hogs and Hoolas, and we need to buy tickets to it, so you'll contact me after this meeting to buy tickets to Hogs and Hoolas, it's happening on Saturday. After that, we have a county, I believe, employee celebration on Thursday. Friday, or sorry, Saturday, I'll be up in Mr. Messick's district looking at a mine, I believe.
Yeah.
And then on Monday, we have a ribbon cutting for a business opening up in Marysville.
And which business?
That would be the butcher shop on Third, next to-
That's gonna be Monday?
The barber shop that is represented here today, as he's actively involved and engaged in the community.
Where it's where the, yeah, it's double Z.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, it's got a-
Evan, to echo again, public comment, I would like to make sure that we have that Clark update from Environmental Health on the fire. We know that we don't want fires, I don't want to compete with Mr. Messick for fires being a danger, and we had the explosion and fire already at the truck facility, so putting out this fire so it doesn't linger for months, like some other districts have disaster buildings lingering for months, I would rather not be replicating that.
We're trying to prevent constantly putting out fires, so, Mr. Messick?
I went to RC, RC with Gary. I wish Gary was here to share with you everything. It was a really great event, very eye-opening for me, as you guys heard earlier. As far as coming up this week, Saturday is a very busy day. There's a car show at the Loa Marika Lions Club, the Food and Water Festival at the Alcoo Center, I'll be in the dunk booth, I think from 2:00 to 3:00, so it's a good chance to come and-
Let me write that down, 2:00 to 3:00?
2:00 to 3:00, start practicing now, throwing baseballs, so you guys can dunk me. There's a fly-in at the Yuba County Airport, starting with a pancake breakfast, and speaking of fly-ins, we're doing a formation flight over Hogs and Hoolas this year, so we have a practice run Sunday morning, so should buy tickets from Seth and go to Hogs and Hoolas. It's, I had a bunch of other things too, but I started walnut harvest, so my brains, I shook my brain out yesterday in a shaker all day, so I'll pass for the rest.
I think also Saturday is the Great Pumpkin Way off at Bishop.
Oh, yeah, and Friday night's a meet.
Friday night is a reception for the farmers, which is very interesting, because these guys are coming from everywhere, literally, and trucking in these 2,000-pound pumpkins. The weather this year should be good. Also, I don't know how many of you attended, I don't think we even mentioned it last time, but the dedication of the Cotton Rosser statue up in the corner of 10th and E. I'm sure you've seen it by now, but it's pretty impressive. I'm gonna say Sunday is not gonna be in closing, because nobody will be here, but we did lose Kelly Bumpus. Kelly and his wife Jackie started the By County Ambulance, I don't know, 40-plus years ago. Their two sons, Alex and Cameron, are in charge of it now. It's a very high-tech, amazing operation, but we did lose Kelly. He and his kids and my kids swam together on the swim team. So one thing I remember about Kelly was, we had somebody out there that looked kind of nefarious, so Kelly says, "Get in the Suburban." You know, this guy drives ambulances, he scared me to death. I mean, we're driving like crazy through subdivisions, you know, the old Suburban. Anyway, it's a very strong local family, and Alex and his brother are keeping it going, and it's a really interesting industry. That's all I got. And Janet?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Evan?
Plenty, plenty to do, so the one event, and I think Supervisor Fuhrer mentioned it, Employee Appreciation Barbecue next Thursday at lunchtime, Riverfront Park.
Nothing for us, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go into closed session. We'll take about a 10-minute, five or 10, we're gonna take a five or 10-minute social break, closed session.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties.
We'd like to acknowledge the fact that over the last four years or more, Bridge Coffee Company has been helping to support our activities here with coffee and with occasional funding. And as you may have heard, Bridge Coffee Company is closing, and their last distributions have occurred as of this past week, and we've been enjoying Bridge Coffee Company here at yubasutter.live and at our house for a number of years, like four years or more, delivered to our door and brewed freshly every day. And we want to acknowledge and thank Tim Stazinski's participation in the community and his thanking us for our support here on yubasutter.live. We'd like to thank him for his support. So, the last time you'll see this on yubasutter.live. We want to thank Tim for his support for our activities here on yubasutter.live, and we want to acknowledge the support from a business in Marysville that we want to encourage and we'll be talking with a little later today, and you may see this a little bit more often.
Thinking good vibes, one day at a time. At Edible Memories, life is sublime. In every bite, you'll find a dream. Join us now, let your heart beat. Step inside, sharing the fun. Edible Memories Bakery, where happiness runs.
Edible Memories Bakery, 321 Third Street, Marysville. And remember that Thursdays on Third, the community market adjacent to Edible Memories Bakery happens Thursdays, right at Third and D Streets from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. this Thursday. Thank Edible Memories. And I'd like to also acknowledge the fact that we get support from Brent Hasty, Gary Bradford, Chris Branscombe, Neil Goforth, and other folks like you, so you can join the crowd, support yubasutter.live, click the link that's down in the bottom. And join us here every Tuesday, we'll have more stuff coming up later this afternoon. Coming up this afternoon, we have the Sutter County Supervisors Meeting at 3:00, and we also have the 7:00 Yuba City Unified School District Board Meeting. We will not be going back to Yuba County Supervisors' regular meeting, they're having closed session, and then they'll be back at 1:30. They will be doing some code enforcement actions that you can participate in if you would like to do that by watching through the link that is in the agenda that you see down at the bottom. We have agenda links and a whole bunch of details on what's happening today. I'm Ted Langdell in the yubasutter.live Marysville Live Streaming Center.